Hello.
It's me.
Probably you.
Sarah.
You make the most part of here.
Yeah, and we are active too.
Can you make sure that Sarah can hear you?
The bad shot. We couldn't find any blood.
Do you have a mic too?
No, it is there.
There's none.
Brian.
We tested.
Actually, I think I have a picture of you.
Huge budget.
Still alive.
Still alive.
She'll be good.
Turn your mic off. Is that better?
I got mine already, but my brother's one.
It's not definitely right. Okay, we know.
Here we go. Couldn't find it.
Okay.
Sarah hasn't joined up yet, so.
My mom's supposed to come get her. Okay. Okay, bye.
So which one are we picking up on? They all like mingle. This is for that and that's for this. Say that again. That is for that and this is for that. This. What is this? Sarah can hear us.
Yeah.
And that is the recording.
It's the correct in numbers.
Need your printings?
What did you say?
Or is this just a further discussion?
I think I changed my mind. I think I want to just explain. And then you can hit into the districts.
Okay.
You guys all ready?
We're ready to go wherever you are. We'll let you know if Sarah can answer.
Richie, you good?
I'm good, yeah, thank you.
Steph, you good?
I am good, yes, thank you.
Luke, you good?
Yes, I am, thank you.
All right.
Sorry, guys, my husband's out of town.
Okay, let me know when we're recording.
We are good.
Okay. Go ahead and call this meeting order. Right now it is six oh one. Monday night, October twenty first, twenty twenty four. Horace City Council meeting. Let's go ahead and stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we do have quorum here today. Sarah will be joining us later if she's able to remotely from Montana. For the regular agenda, is there any changes to the to the regular agenda?
No changes. None they weren't aware of.
Okay. Go ahead and look for a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Still moved.
Okay, I got a motion for the regular agenda. Do I got a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Number four is the consent agenda. Has everybody had a chance to read through the consent agenda for tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is there any questions?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead and ask.
Was Windsor waffle, was the fire department notified of Windsor waffles? Because I know they had questions the last time and said that they were supposed to review their food truck before they?
They would review the food trucks at the site, like when they're.
Yeah, so I'm asking, were they notified? So that we can stay on the same page as the fire department? Because that was, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I guess fire department said that anytime there's a fire truck, or a fire truck, a food truck, that they need to be inspected by the fire department. Okay. Okay.
Did participate or were supposed to participate?
The vendors are notified and told to communicate with fire when they're at the different events.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that the fire department's aware that they have something going on. Okay, that was all I had.
Okay, any other questions?
None. I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second.
I'll second that.
I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Number five, approve the city council meeting minutes from October seventh, twenty twenty four. Does everybody had a chance to read the minutes from twenty twenty four, October seventh?
Yes.
Any questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes from October seventh, twenty twenty four.
I'll make a motion to approve October seventh, twenty twenty four, meeting minutes.
Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second, please.
Okay, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Number six, approve the city council's special meeting minutes from October tenth, twenty twenty four. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from October tenth, twenty twenty four?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes for October tenth, twenty twenty four.
I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, I got a motion, do I got a second?
Sure, yes.
Okay, I got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seven, public comment. Does anybody here for public comment tonight? Going once, anybody here for public comment tonight? Twice, and does anybody like to speak for public comment tonight?
I guess I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead and state your name and your address, please.
Connor. Wright Meyer, six three five four eighty third Avenue South, Horace.
I'm sorry, eighty?
Eighty third Avenue.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
I just had a question on the resolution of the boulevard trees. I believe an email was sent out a little while ago related to that program. And some of us who have already put in trees expecting deposits back from when our houses were built, I just was curious as to the resolution of that. And
Okay.
I may be at the wrong place.
Nope, you're not at the wrong place.
Okay.
We can get, we can get an answer here, so.
I believe it was to be covered at one of the previous meetings, but I thought it was also to be covered today, so.
It is actually on the agenda today.
So it'll be item number ten on the agenda tonight? So are you looking just for a refund? Or are you looking to get reimbursed for what you've already planted?
For what I've already planted. They just, the city's been great. Everyone's been great there. They just, they can't approve it until this is approved. And I just, I understand there's debate maybe about it. And I just wanted to bring up that, you know, there are some of us who have already planted trees thinking this was, or deposits have been given and just raising that as a thought.
This been tabled.
Okay, so this is, this is ten still?
This been tabled multiple times.
Not for a specific reason, it just.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, continuing on it, but the deposit should probably be considered as what I have to say.
Okay, understood, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else for public comment? Okay, public comment is closed. Moving on to number eight, we got the sheriff's update. Long time no see.
Hello again. It's nice to see some familiar faces, some new folks as well. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Corporal Ross Crowsey, Cass County Sheriff's Office. Neither Craig or Bryce could be here tonight, so I'm not stuck here. I'm happy to be here. I was a deputy here for three years back in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one, somewhere around there. So kind of feels like home a little bit. Did they go over the monthly report at the last meeting at all or not?
No.
No, okay. I'm assuming you guys all have this or you all seen it. I'll just run through the numbers really quick just to get that out of the way. Four hundred and sixty-five calls for service in the city. A lot of those are probably COP type calls, which doesn't get listed on our report. That's basically whenever a deputy comes into town to patrol, they check out in the town. Forty percent of the calls that were logged, residents and building checks, those are just our deputies going around at night, shaking doors, making sure businesses are closed, or during the daytime if businesses are open, going in, saying hi to folks and meet with the business owners. Nothing else really stood out to me while I looked at these numbers. I've had them for the last couple of days since I knew I was coming here. So I didn't really get too much of a chance to look at too much. I think the biggest call probably was that gentleman around Bean Days who kicked out the back of our squad car. And a couple of the charges on there, you'll see that he related to him or the disarming or attempting to disarm a law enforcement officer. He did try to grab one of our guns. Criminal mischief, a whole bunch of stuff. He picked up a bunch of felonies from that, six or seven, I think. So that's obviously still an ongoing case. That's probably all I can say about that one. As far as things more recent, that I think is probably important to know, there's been a rash of construction trailer thefts again here in the last couple of weeks. The last couple, from the last couple of days ago, we got a really good suspect picture off of a company that had a camera on one of their trailers. Guy backed right up to it in his personal car, got out and faced the camera. So we have a pretty good idea of who that one is. And we're thinking, and I can't speak for our investigators, obviously they're much smarter than I am, but he's probably linked to the other ones as well. So just remind your citizens to kind of keep an eye out for things. If you see something weird, it's probably weird. And we're more than happy to come and investigate those instances. If it ends up being nothing, great, wonderful. But we want to, we really want to find out who those people are doing those suspicious things. I think last night, we had two suspicious calls in new construction. And one guy got arrested on warrants. So we're always happy to come check it out. Horace is obviously a big center of our, kind of our area of focus in the county, but being such a, it's a metro now from when I was here even. It's, you guys are in the metro. So we are, we're always trying to focus people here. We're more than happy to take those calls, so. Does anybody have any questions for me about anything?
There, I know you guys are probably in the loop on this, but there was somebody trying to get into somebody's home in Lost River in the southwest part of it. And they put pictures, you know, on Facebook. And then people said, I saw him coming through our backyard. It was just sort of this, I don't know if that ever wrapped up? There was a resolution to that?
I saw, I was actually, I think the first day that I got, I can't remember the gentleman's name. He came and found me, I was sitting up by the church writing a report, and he came up and said, hey, I saw this guy on my camera. And then he said he's going to get with his neighbors and kind of see if they can get more information. Then he actually called it in later and someone took the report. I don't know if that guy was ever tied to anything, to be honest. I never heard anything else about it. It wasn't any kind of like of our email intel sharing. So I'm guessing nothing's come of him doing that. I don't think he was found to, I mean, it's certainly not okay to go through people's yards, but illegal, who knows? But we didn't find anything, I don't think, as far as I knew on the surface level. But with trailer thefts and stuff like that, that's a great thing to report to us because maybe he's in the area and he's strange and we'll talk to him and we'll break some big case. So, yeah, we always appreciate things like that. But as far as him, I don't think it went too far.
I guess, I, I mean, it appears that this report seems a little bit more.
Detailed?
Well, it just seems like we have a lot more going on that kind of makes me a little bit nervous. I know I see some domestic calls. And then the one on the, one, two, three, four, the fifth one up from the bottom on that right hand side, the S E X assault. Sorry, my sense here.
Nope, yep, you're good.
I, I mean, is, should we be concerned about some of these bigger violent crimes that are happening? I mean, I don't know how violent these are, but it just seems like a little bit nerve wracking that we have stuff like that going on.
No, I certainly understand that. Not, there's no good thing about domestics. But the kind of catch with domestics is usually, that's obviously between two people who know each other and it's a very isolated incident. Maybe not for that couple, but in general, it's usually not a big threat to the public based on those things. I haven't heard of any kind of trends in Horace of anybody being violent to being part of the community. Those, I think those type, those call types really exist without people knowing them a lot of times. There's domestics everywhere. It doesn't matter what neighborhood you live in, someone could get angry and have a bad night. It is what it is. But as far as an overarching issue with violence in Horace, I don't believe that there are any kind of issue. My parents moved to town three months ago and they're happy to be out of the metro. So they're very happy to be in what they consider a quiet little Horace. So, which some of us may not consider that anymore. But yeah, no, as far as like an overarching trend of violence, I wouldn't say that's anything I have to worry about. That guy who kicked out our squad car was probably the main, the main violent offender this last month. And that was obviously related to us, so. To answer your question, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about any kind of.
Nothing with that assault at the end of the list there?
Which one is that? Is my list cut off here? I guess I can see, where's the?
Scroll down a little bit.
Oh, on that list, I see. Yeah, no, that's, that had to have been an isolated incident. I don't remember hearing anything about it. So what it very well could have been was a delayed report of something happening, I'm guessing. Because usually if there's like a act of assault that happens like that, it's in our shift briefs and we hear about them. I don't remember hearing about that one, so I wouldn't worry about it. If you would like more information on that one specifically, reach out to Craig or Bryce, just for ease of mind, I get it.
It's just a touchy subject. And I just want to make sure that we're keeping our, keeping our eyes on those.
For sure. Yeah, like I said, I can, I can reach out to Bryce and Craig and just have them look, look through that just to kind of inform you guys what that was, just to ease some minds. I got no problem with that, so.
Sure.
Don't have any other questions, anybody else?
Nope.
I'm sorry about my voice, I was at the Bison game. I'm just kidding. I just, I just got it back this morning.
Understandable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, number nine, special assessment district certification. Jim, I'm going to let you take the lead on this.
Mr. Mayor, I can serve this one if you'd like. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. The city has to discuss the special assessments, the districts that we've previously discussed. The city council held its objection meeting on October tenth. You guys heard from those that filed written objections to the council voicing any concerns that they had with the special assessment commission's determination of the proposed assessments for those properties. We went through seven of the lists. There was good discussion with all those. Jim will be going over some of the districts where there were additional considerations from the city council on looking at certain methodologies and certain numbers. So Jim and Nick will present on that. As you know, we did not take any action at that October tenth meeting because the engineers and I needed to meet with the special assessment commission to go over a recent North Dakota Supreme Court decision. We held a meeting with the special assessment commission, a special meeting last Wednesday, October sixteenth, to discuss that and go over a benefits determination document. The special assessment commission approved that document at their meeting. And as a result of that, we can move forward with the list tonight. So Jim, again, can go over any additional considerations for those districts. And then the council can act on the districts. And tonight would be confirming the special assessment list. And that list will then be certified to the county and then assessments will then be levied next year or payable in year twenty twenty five. So if there's any, any questions regarding any of that, we are towards the, the end of this special assessment cycle. And again, tonight is just confirming the lists. And there's no, no public comment because you guys held your public hearing and closed that, or not public hearing, excuse me, you took the public comments at your last meeting. So.
Understood. Okay.
Turn it over to Jim.
All right, Mr. Mayor, council, would we want to do these one at a time so we can knock one off as we go?
Yeah, please.
So the first one was sanitary sewer improvement district twenty twenty one dash four, lift station SA fourteen. This was located near the sixty third street and eighty third avenues, this is the Lakeview addition. This was presented on an equivalent unit basis with a modifier of point five. Nothing has changed from when the original recommendation was sent to the special assessment commission. Without, it didn't have any objections and it didn't have any last week or two weeks ago when we met to discuss this one. So this one, if you have any questions, I'll take them. Otherwise, we recommend you just approve it as presented. So you only have the ones that change in front of you, so.
Okay.
Don't get looking for, go get lost looking for the ones that didn't change. I didn't want to put more on the plate than, than what we had, so.
I don't, I don't have any.
I don't have any additional questions on this one either.
I don't either.
Okay. Do, we're separately motioning. I mean, I'll make a motion to approve the special assessment certifications.
To confirm the special assessment list as presented.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the special assessment list as presented for district twenty twenty one dash four, which is lift station SA fourteen.
Okay, I have a motion. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Mayor, next one is sanitary sewer improvement district twenty twenty one dash six, horseshoe bend lift station SA dash thirteen. We talked about this one in great, great length on Thursday where we talked about, we talked about these. The change on this one, we heard from some of the horseshoe bend residents that just wanted some additional information on a different project. And we also heard from the developer on the south side of sixty fourth avenue. Through discussions on that one, they have access to lift stations twelve and thirteen. And with about a three quarter percent, three quarter percentage to twelve and a quarter to thirteen. So we reduced the assessment on those three large lots south of sixty fourth avenue to a twenty five percent benefit as discussed at that meeting. You will see the map, it says south lots at twenty five percent rather than large bond on the top. So that's the, this will be the numbers that will be approved tonight if you so choose to, to go through with that one, so. This was done on the same method with equivalent units. A point five for a driver on the areas that received that and then a reduction of a one to a point seven five on the Riverdale area where they have individual septic tanks and not the ability to directly connect to the line. So that was a discussion at the special objection commissions, or special assessment commission's objection hearing. And that's what the direction we had on those lots was.
The point, the set, point seven five, yeah. So what if I said, I'm not sure, I think we should be going down to the twenty five percent assessment for those lots?
Can you refresh? The special assessment commission's original recommendation was a hundred percent assessment on those three lots, those three large lots, correct?
That's what we had proceeded with, yes. And then it came to the objection to the city council.
Right, right. And you know, it did look, I know we had a long discussion about it and we did look at it. But you know, in the additional information we have, I mean, it is true. Those lots are community, compact development and community focus, which could be up to seventeen units per acre. I, I mean, after I looked into it a little bit, I probably feel most comfortable going with what the commission approved the first go around.
Yeah, can you explain to me again? Has the, the other assessment that they're in already been? Did we already, we already approved that one?
Yeah, that one's, that one's been in, it's twenty twenty dash one or nineteen dash, it might have been twenty nineteen dash one. So that one's been certified for a long time.
Right.
And we worked that one out at that meeting to be about a three quarter benefit to the three quarter partial assessment based on that one. So we reduced this one to the quarter to get a whole bit of it. But we didn't talk about any type of density or anything like that. We just talked about the three units per acre, which had been discussed at the time of the special assessment policy, revisiting the special assessment policy within three units per acre. So there was a lot of discussion had as to what the crystal ball holds for these areas. Ultimately, the special assessment commission did, did lead on that three, three units per acre.
So they, were they aware that there was the other?
So that came to them after the objection. So when the objection hearing to the special assessment commission was held, that's when it came to light from the developer that, hey, we may have been assessed for these other lots. So the direction from the council at that time was look back because we didn't have the records with us that night and kind of. So we went back and, and looked at the records and did find a partial assessment from the previous project on these lots. And that's what we brought forward to you, rather than send it back to the special assessment commission. They just approved it with the discussion that there could be something to change.
Was that partial, can you tell me what that partial assess? I don't know if you have any paperwork you can show me, but that partial assessment was for?
Lift station twelve.
Twelve.
Which is in Salt Dale Farms.
And this one, this assessment?
Is for lift station thirteen on Deer Creek Parkway. So if you look at the map, there's, you've got on the bottom here by the scale, you've got sixty eighth street, Thomas, Samuel, and something else, they're all blocked there. So there are deeper sewers at those four spots. So if half of this lot would go down, you could say some of it will go up. We have one connection here on the north side off of Deer Creek Parkway to the station thirteen on, on sixty eighth street. So they could go either way. It just, that's why the partial, why the partial assessment is the way we, the area, the way we went.
But if we're utilizing our policy, which is the three units per acre, correct? In those, in those areas?
That's where we, that's where it settled upon.
Right, I mean, so, I mean, even, I mean, no offense, but, but even that seems like a deal then. If, if the area is going to eventually be community focused at seventeen units per acre, even if we did a, a three units per acre hundred percent on this one and was it a three units per acre on the previous one? That's only six unit allocation, right? I mean, am I running through that in my head right?
Sounds right.
I mean, I'm not trying to be difficult, but that seems equitable. That, that seems fair to me. I mean, that's kind of what we look on the, the policy, right? Versus, and I did, I did understand your square foot argument, but our policy deals on the, the units per acre and it seems reasonable or maybe even a little generous at three units per acre. That's just my thought, I mean, I'm open to discussion.
Well, I just have a couple of questions too. So I'm just looking back at this letter from our objection packet from Chris and you mentioned, or he mentions that there are five sanitary sewer services stubbed to serve. And there are already existing lift stations. And so the part about it being stubbed, I feel like is a different matter, right? Because we're only tacking lift stations?
No, because the stubs are where they'll access the lift station. So the stubout is the pipe that they'll connect to that will flow to the lift station to use that lift station.
So they've already been assessed for a different lift station?
Yes.
Okay.
At a three acre per unit rate?
I don't remember if we went that far back in two thousand ninety, two thousand twenty. A lot more has, with special assessments than those. And I just, I can't remember what.
We didn't have a policy back then.
There, no, it wasn't a policy. But it was identified as a partial, partial assessment. And then through the information that we had with this district, we determined it to be about that seventy five percent leaving an additional twenty five percent. So that's how we landed on, on this one. But the density, I, there, the special assessment commission really grappled with that as far as, is it going to be very, very dense or is it not going to be very dense? And, and they don't hold the crystal ball, so.
And at the previous meeting, Jim, you said that you did think it would be fair and you would know the most, I think, in this room about how the city sewers work. You think that twenty five percent is the most fair?
Based on the information that we had as far as the previous assessment, the proposed assessment and where, and how that proposed one, what a full unit would equal.
The amount of sewer that you think that those properties will use, you think comes about to twenty five percent with the remaining seventy five percent of their sewer?
Like I said, there's one going to sixty eighth to the north, which is the thirteen. And then there's like those, those five on the south side there where I, I just, I hate to keep harping on the fact that we just don't know what's going to go in there and how it's going to be oriented on, if it's going to be built on the sixty fourth side, the sixty fifth side. It's a lot of.
That's just it, we don't.
That's the tough part.
No, so we don't know if that's fair. Does Sarah, Sarah, I know.
She just launched it.
Yeah. Has she looked into this, do you think? She's, I know, the infrastructure person. I guess that's why I was hoping to catch her, but.
She was on watch your drop pretty.
She must have dropped.
Okay. Other questions? And then we're in discussion.
I mean, maybe I'm not understanding, but Jim, when you say we just don't have a crystal ball and we just don't know.
I hate to say it, but.
The density, then how do we know that twenty five percent would be appropriate?
I don't think we hang up on twenty five percent. I don't think we hang up on 25%, I think it's the units per acre at that point. Because I would be fine with 20, if you think of it as 25% of the area would go to the north.
Yeah.
Not 25% of like a usage or whatever. Like 75% of the development would go south, 25% would go north, which I think is accurate based on the way the infrastructure lays out right now. But as far as if there's a 20 plex on the south side going to the south and a 30 on the north side going north, I, I don't know. That's where the, the density really kind of, if you use the 2045.
So if you guys want Sarah's opinion on this one? Can we move on to the additional district and come back and see if Sarah joins again?
Can I, I also did a little, while we're still on this one, but not necessarily about those areas that Chris brought up, but just, I dug in a bit to the septic systems. I know at our lake, well, I've had a septic system, I know a couple of people in council do too. But looking at that, are we, we agreed that point seven five seems like a fitting number. I do think, after looking in a little bit, that I do think that that is fair because we, let's see here. The regional drain field at our lake failed and everybody had to put in their own. And it turned into like a $20,000 project with a thousand dollar per summer pumping. And so I do think as these systems fail, it is going to be super expensive for the residents in that area. So I was just, I needed some time to think about that and look at that. And I do support a point seven five. I think their opportunity to tie in is very valid and necessary for that area. A point seven five, or I mean, they have the same opportunity for moving their sewer out here in the future, but as anybody else. And so anyway, if we were going to change that, I would say that I support leaving that.
I, I do support leaving it at point seven five too. We, I mean, there may be some discussion of them wanting to look to access, but we've had no discussion on that. They've not seen the dollar amounts on that. I'm not, we don't know if they're actually going to do it. There is nobody that's on a situation where it's ready to fail. And I'm not completely convinced due to variances that Fargo-Cast Public Health would offer any way that they would be forced to switch over to our system. So I would be comfortable leaving it at point seven five.
I agree with everything that you said there.
Okay, do you guys want to wait for Sarah's input on this or do you want to vote on this one and?
Sure, I mean, we might want to.
I think it's that 25% question, right? So maybe that's the part that we are waiting for her input.
I mean, if she hops on, I'd like to hear her thought, but if she doesn't, I'm fine with moving forward. Do you want to just go to the next one really quick?
With the 25%?
Yeah.
No, we're not making a motion. We'll just come back to it.
We will come back to this one. Sure, let's see if she pops back on.
Okay, so we'll go on to item number C.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council. So that's water sewer storm and street improvement district 2022 dash one, which is the Vista Industrial Edition pavement. The pavement was done by modified each and the water and sewer services that were installed as part of the project were done by an each. If you had a service prior to that, you didn't get assessed for the water and sewer services. If you did, if your lot didn't have them and you got put in by the, and they were installed part of the project, you were assessed for that. This one was, if you remember, had some lot discussion on shop condos on, on large lots where the density, there was an awful lot of buildings in a, in a large lot. We did have a couple of comments at the special assessment commission objection hearing. And that was just, like I said last time, they had installed a water and sewer service between the time we bid the job and we built the job. So they, they didn't, theirs was removed. Other than that, we didn't have much for objections. And there wasn't any objection to go to the city council level two Thursdays ago.
Okay, discussion?
Looks good, I don't have any comments on this one.
I do not have any comments on this one either.
No, me either, sorry, I'm just grabbing my papers from the last meeting where I had some.
We have no questions, no comments. I'll be looking for a motion for item nine C for water storm and sewer improvement district 2022 dash two.
I'll make that motion, please.
Okay, I have a motion, excuse me, 2021 dash one, I'm sorry, Vista Industrial Edition.
Yep, I'm sorry.
2022 dash one.
2022 dash one, Water Sewer and Street Improvement District. This is my motion, please.
Okay, I have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Moving on to D.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District 2022 dash two, Lost River Seventh Edition. This one was done as any typical subdivisions were by front foot for the main lines each for the services. Area for the storm sewer. We did have, if you recall, a kind of a goofy lot on the southeast corner where there is a drainage easement on the backside of it. With your direction, we decided to square off that, that, that lot. I shouldn't say square it off, but take out the jut out so it's, they use the hypotenuse there. And we also had a couple other front footages that were entered in error and those are, have now been corrected. So what we're looking for here would be confirmation of the list as presented tonight.
As long as those were corrected, I don't think I have any other questions or concerns.
I don't.
We did send the updated numbers to that resident earlier today.
Oh, perfect.
Oh, good, okay. Did it work out about as we had anticipated?
I believe so.
Did we talk last?
Pretty close to that. I don't know if he was nodding or not, but. It worked out close when we talked about that last week.
Okay.
I have nothing further on this one either.
Okay, no further questions. I'll be looking for a motion for nine D, Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District 2022 dash two, Lost River Seven.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Moving on to E.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District number 2022 dash five, Maple Lake Estates Edition Phase Two. This was treated the same way as Lost River Seventh was, front footage area each. This one has a larger assessment because there's a bunch of owner of the fill brought in and that contributed to a significant amount of additional assessment. But there were no objections throughout the special assessment commission process nor the city council objection process.
Okay, do we have questions or discussion?
Not for me, no.
I don't either.
Okay, there are no questions or discussion. I'll be looking for a motion for Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District 2022 dash five, Maple Lakes Edition Phase Two.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Go on to number five, or letter F, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District number 2022 dash six, South Dale Farms Fourth Edition. This one was the one where we had a whole lot going on. Land changing hands in the middle of the process. Parcels getting bigger in the middle of the process, some parcels getting smaller in the middle of the process. And a reference in a spreadsheet that, that wasn't working. So Nick and Chris have worked through this. We've worked through, through everything that was talked about at the special assessment commission objection level. And that was the averaging of the lots and some of that other stuff that we talked about. And kind of the same thing we've done in previous additions. And then working with a square footage number for the remainder of the parcels that Chris had suggested. So you do have a map in front of you, but that list is what we are asking tonight to approve, approve or confirm the list based on the record, what was discussed at the Thursday and presented to you tonight.
Was this one where the right of way was adjusted? Okay, okay.
Yes, this is the one where the parcel, the parcel in that northwest corner, not Sunset Valley, but the other one. It was, grew one way and shrunk another way through the right of way. Then Sunset Valley was a large lot. We started the process and then it got subdivided as we went forward with it, so.
And the church, this is also the one that the church?
This is the church one.
Directed about, right?
Yeah.
I don't have any further questions on this one.
I don't either. I'm comfortable with the developer reallocating before any lots are sold or anything to, since it's more of an internal adjustment, I think I don't have any problems with that.
Okay, there are no further questions. I will look for a motion then for nine F, Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District 2022 dash six, South Dale Farms Fourth Edition.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I got a motion, do I got a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Sarah, can you hear us now?
Yes, I just got on, can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear.
Great, awesome, I might land, I might lose you again, but I'll, I'll do my best here.
Okay, well, we got you on, we'll go back to nine B, Jim. Do you need Jim to go through it again?
Sarah, I, I asked that we get your opinion on nine B. I, I don't know if you had a chance to go through what we did at the last special meeting. But I just wanted to get your thoughts on the request from Mr. Mack.
So Sarah, if as you recall, this project was lift station SA 13, which is up near the Deer Creek Parkway and County Road 17. This is one of the services, the area for Horseshoe, Baton Riverdale, area Ashwood, Deer Creek Estates, one, two, three, and now four. And then the areas along in south of 60, north and south of 64th Avenue. At our discussion on the Thursday of the objection hearing to the city council, we had talked about the large lots south of 64th Avenue and their allocation. And at that point, we worked through the math with the given information of a 25% assessment based on the fact that they have, that those parcels have five accesses to lift station 12 and one currently on 68th Street to lift station 13. And they've paid a partial assessment to the previous district. And then there's a partial, a partial assessment on this current district. So I think that some of the council members were just talking about densities and the ability of these lots, or these land, this land to have a significantly higher than three units per acre density on them when they're developed. Correct?
Yeah, like at the last meeting, Sarah, it was discussed in sense. And it kind of was talked about that we should go down to a partial assessment for this one as well. But I have some concerns about some density and things that would be going there. Like Jim said, we don't have a crystal ball, but I just wanted to know your thoughts.
Sarah, were you able to hear our prior conversation on this one tonight?
I, I was not, no.
Okay, I don't know if you want to hear what my thoughts were or if you want to just go ahead?
No, go ahead, please, share them with me.
Well, I'll just, I had just, I had just mentioned earlier tonight, as Naomi mentioned with the density. In the comp plan, these, these lots are currently slated for compact development and community focus, which is like five units per acre up to 17 units per acre. And I felt most comfortable with leaving it where the special assessment commission said it, which was 100% benefit even at three units per acre, which is how they are assessed in this district. Even though they were priorly assessed for some additional sewer infrastructure, I still feel that that's reasonable. And maybe, I mean, even, even if it's 100% for each, that's basically the equivalent of six, six, equivalent of six units per acre and it could be up to 17. And so that, that was my hesitation.
Okay, what does the rest of the council feel on them?
I mean, I'm kind of similar to her. I mean, we don't, we don't know, we, I mean, we don't know what all would end up being there. It could be very high. I mean, it is compact development. I'm not sure that I, I appreciate that the developer wanted to try to use money sense instead of the allocations that we go by with our policy to try to make it like an even 50/50 maybe, kind of how they were trying to describe it. But that's, we don't do that with our assessment policy. We don't go by sense. And I guess since it has the ability to be compact development, I guess I kind of agree with Stephanie.
I, I can see what they're saying. I do think if we are talking about lift station and only a portion of their sewer is heading that direction and they are already paying what our policy says for a different lift station as well, I might be more inclined to look at giving them a partial assessment on this. As Jim has recommended that a, you know, a portion, a percentage of their infrastructure would be using this lift station.
I just feel, I just feel with the density, we, we, we wouldn't know. I mean, they could be taking on a whole bunch going up that way. So I don't know how to justify that.
Is there a possibility that we could look at following the policy as it sits now? And then once the plat comes out for what will go there, would that warrant a second look at this?
They're shaking their heads, no.
No, once, once you set that amount, I mean, it would just be distributed amongst the lots that are platted. But you're still just taking that, that number that was assessed and just giving it up on however many lots are in that replat.
How much are we talking here?
I don't know how to do math.
Can you do the math?
So what, we showed you at the last meeting, you had a 25 option, a 50 option, and a 75% option.
Yep.
So there was the 175 and 50 and the 25.
Yep.
I don't know if you have that at your, I don't think I do. I'm.
I do.
Think I have it here. So if we were, let's see here.
So it looks like.
So let's take the big one on the corner at a 100%, not to comp on you there. But it's 195,000 on the 100%. And then if you take it down to 75, it goes from 195 to 155. And this isn't a direct correlation because it's not just reducing the dollar amount, it's reducing the area.
Right.
And then if you go to a 50%, it goes to 111,000. So we're at 1, 195, 155, 112. And the next one is 60,000, which is the 25% assessment, so.
Yeah.
It, it drops it down obviously quite a bit.
A very significant amount.
So the special assessment commission obviously met on this, what was their recommendation?
So the special assessment commission met on this one with our recommendation of 100%. It came up at the special assessment commission objection hearing from the developer that they are already being assessed for the certain, for a portion of the lift station 12 project. And the special assessment commission approved the list at that time knowing that we were going to be researching with the developer what was actually assessed at the time that lift station 12 was put in there because it is identified as a partial assessment. Now, we don't have density and we don't have a lot of really good information from that time because there was no policy, there was no, we, I hate to say it, but I mean, the process has evolved over, over how many years? This process has evolved. So the special assessment commission did approve it at one, but they did know that there was potential for it to be reduced based on the other partial assessment that that land was being assessed for. And that's who we talked about at our meeting on the, what was it, the 16th or?
Yeah.
I believe it was the 10th.
So they're being partially assessed for lift station 12. How much benefit are they getting off of lift station 12?
So there are, if you want to look at it in probably the simplest terms, there are five connection points that those three lots can use to go to the south. And right now, there's one connection point to go to the north at 68th Street to station 13.
So they have more connection points going to the partial assessment?
Yes.
And then they only have, so why did we do a partial assessment with more connections?
Yeah, I was just.
But, I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. I feel like. That, I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. I feel like with, given that information, I feel like they should be assessed at a higher rate for this because, I mean, they have to, it has to equal out somewhere. And if they were only getting a partial, in my opinion, Sarah, I feel like that was a pretty sweet deal. And this is still a sweet deal.
Do we know what, we don't know what percent of our current policy they were assessed at before?
Oh, no, not, not, we didn't dive into it, into it that far because I guess we talked about twenty-five percent of the last one, so.
Well, what you just said also makes me think that they will be using less of this north lift station if they have five.
There, there's a greater potential for that, yes. So we have more go south than go north.
So twenty, you know, twenty percent might go north to this lift station.
So that's another way that we look at some of these is that what percent, like taking it as a storm sewer. What percentage of the area is actually going to run to that, to that storm sewer pond or something? And you could look at it that way, that twenty-five percent of this land is going to go north and seventy-five percent is going to go south.
Right.
And that's why I bring up the five connections to the south and the one to the north where twenty-five, seventy-five, twenty-five, probably a pretty cool split.
Well, then if that's the case, then we shouldn't have gone a partial assessment on lift station twelve. That should have been a full assessment and then I'd be open to a partial assessment here. But the fact that we went a partial assessment with that much, I agree, there needs to be a balance here.
Is there any way to dive into how much of a partial they had for the last one?
Well, probably. I mean, if that's the direction you want to take.
I don't know. Not necessarily, but.
I think we have to. Without having that picture, there's no way to determine fairly what makes sense to balance this out. If I'm wrong, please, someone speak up, but without knowing what that impact is and how much of a partial assessment it is, I mean, if it's a, an eighty percent partial assessment, that's very different than a twenty percent partial assessment, right?
Yeah, I agree.
But remember last, we met, we, when we met last, we talked about that. And it was a twenty-five percent that got it to a full, a one in today's equivalent, which is probably more expensive than it was back when lift station twelve was assessed through Southdale Farms fourth, or Southdale Farms first, I'm sorry.
At, at a calculation of three units per acre. And that, that's, that's where I remain, that's where I remain stuck on it. It's what the special assessment commission originally determined. And that rings, that rings true for me. That's, that's how we allocate these things. That's how we calculate them as units per acre. And the comp plan does show much more density than that.
But they were thinking three per acre, not knowing they had any other lift station? Correct? That's what the special assessment committee recommended when they didn't know that this area was also using lift station twelve?
Correct.
They thought that was fair not knowing about that?
I think there was a, there was a lot of discussion on what density was to be used. And at that time, the three units per acre was used very commonly throughout any type of update to the policy.
Well, it sounds to me like we're outdated and we've come a long way in progress with our policy. And I think we can do better because if we're showing the density of, you know, up to seventeen units an acre, that's a far cry from three. So this needs to be looked at a little more closely so that we as a council can be informed fairly instead of throwing darts at a dartboard.
So what do you want to, I, I don't know what to, I don't know where to go, Sarah. Like what do you, what do you suggest we?
Well, we need to know what the previous partial assessment value paid to date is, what that total assessment looks like. And then we need to look at the connections. This is going to be a discussion. I'm going to have to sit in the engineer's office and look at this a little bit more closely to determine what makes sense. If there's only one connection there, that doesn't mean that others can't be added in the future based on density, right? So that's something we need to really have a handle on to understand. And further, again, like you said, we don't have a crystal ball. I mean, we don't know if this is going to be three units per acre or seventeen units per acre. And I'm, I'm very partial with looking at the comp plan and saying, okay, this is what we planned for this area. There's no reason to deviate from that, which leads me to a higher assessment value.
Okay, Mr. Croker. Go ahead. Okay, Mr. Croker, what's the due date for these certifications?
We're trying to get as much time as possible for that ten day interest free period. The county needs the list by November first. So that's why we're pushing to get these done to allow that, that ten day period.
Okay, Jim, it's October twenty-one right now. Are you guys going to be able to get that information by October one?
November one.
November one, I'm sorry.
Then no choice. We will get it done.
You will get it done?
But we aren't just throwing darts at a dartboard. There's so much that goes into this that I, it's not just darts on a dartboard.
Understood.
So.
Okay. Then, then if it's not just darts at a dartboard, what is the recommendation? And how was it, how was it manifested? How did you come up with it?
So their partial assessment from the lift station twelve works out to about seventy-five percent of a, a full assessment on lift station thirteen. So with that being said, then there's a twenty-five percent left over to get them to a one full lift station. I don't care if it's thirteen or twelve, they're paying for one full lift station based on the information that we have from that project and the current project. That's how we got to that point a week and a half ago.
Okay. Okay, so between now and then, quick discussion, November first. Possible meeting dates between now and then to certify this specific assessment. We're going to need everybody to let Bretton know their schedule then to come back if we want to come back and not deal with it tonight. How do you guys want to deal with this?
What's the process?
I think he's asking the council.
Oh, sorry.
I guess I'll make whatever work, whatever Sarah, I mean, I want Sarah to be here, so I would go by her schedule.
If Sarah, knowing, I, this is new information to me, that he just said that they had seventy-five percent of a full assessment last time, is that sufficient information or do you want a lot more?
So seventy-five percent of a full assessment based on a three unit per parcel, is that my understanding?
I can't say that for sure. I don't have it in front of me.
We didn't, back then, we didn't have.
It was probably based on area, to be perfectly honest. There was a lot of stuff that was regional, was based on area. Larger the lot, the more you pay. It didn't take into effect density. Density is something that came along with the, with the special assessment policy and the use factor.
Would basing it on area make it, would that have made it?
It might have, but the policy, regional, equivalent units, and the load factor is the way that the policy went. So we were trying to stick with that.
So are you going to be able to compare apples to apples?
Not really.
We're going to try. We were going to have to look at it on a, break it down into an area. I mean, we had square footage introduced to it. So I mean, it's how we want to look at it.
Understood. Okay.
I just want to make sure that we can present the information to you guys that makes sense. That isn't just perceived as a guess.
Understood. I want to make sure you guys have the proper amount of time to do it.
Right.
And that, that's my concern. I feel like we're comparing apples to oranges here. If it was based on area previously, I'd be curious what the assessment would be today if we ran that same calculation and compared it to what the calculation is on the current policy. Does that help outline what may get us closer?
I, I don't think it helps from a legal standpoint. If you're, you're not using the same methodology then. You're not, if you use a different methodology with twenty nineteen, with the methodology that was used for this one, and then now you're looking at a different methodology for this lot compared to how the other lots were done, that's where you're going to run into issues unless you're just doing it as a comparison just to try to see what the numbers are. But I, I don't like the idea of trying to use different methodologies.
So in the, in the previous meeting two weeks ago, we did have a comparison of square foot by this one, is that correct?
Yep, the developer provided.
Understood. Yep, that's why I'm looking at, Chris, it's no offense to you, I'm just staring at Jim. The developer provided square footage and that was the only way we, we went back then for that, giving up that assessment is by square foot?
Typically, it was by a, a component of area, be it an acre, be it, you can divide it out, get it to a square foot, you get it to a square yard if you wanted.
Fair enough. Okay, so.
Typically, it's done by acre.
And, and at that point, two weeks ago, that those numbers were accurate from the developer?
He had the same list that we have. I mean, maybe.
Understood.
He's been involved in every one of these, Southdale Farms ones.
I get it. I'm just trying to prevent asking him.
Gotcha.
Even though he's in the room.
Get a marked up version of the previous list.
Okay. And Sarah, were you around for that meeting two weeks ago? I'm trying to remember.
I was.
Okay.
I was.
Yep, yep.
But I don't have those numbers in front of me now.
Understood. Okay, so what do you guys want to do? Do you want to table this and regroup for this specific assessment based on the numbers that Jim can, can pull? Or how do you guys want to handle this?
I'm, I'm up to, I'm thinking what Sarah, I want to know what Sarah thinks because she's not here. I want to make sure she is comfortable.
Yeah, I apologize. I got called up to Montana for work here.
No worries.
I will be back, I will be back on Friday and I will be around all next week. So if there's a danger in time that we can get together, say, over the lunch hour or in the afternoon, whatever would work, I will make that work.
Okay. Is there double Lucas?
Yeah.
If we have the rest of the week, we'll get, we'll get through it.
Okay.
I still want to be tomorrow morning.
Oh, that's fine. Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay, we're going to table this then until probably next week. We will set a time to reconvene for this, this specific assessment and/or any others we would have questions on at that point.
Yeah, Jim, go ahead and throw a meeting on my calendar for Friday afternoon and I'll come over to your office and we'll, we'll crunch numbers if you can show me the methodology you used. I'm not disputing that based on what you provided me. It's just different methodologies. And with the new policy, I need to get up to speed with how that compares to what we did previously.
Okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
All right. So we're up to nine G then, Jim?
Yep.
When you get a chance?
Yeah, nine G is water sewer storm sewer improvement district twenty-two-two-seven, Southdale Farms fifth addition. This was treated like the other ones, front footage each area. Was no objections throughout the special assessment commission objection hearing. There was an addition of some platted land. It is the Southdale Farms ninth addition. So that was updated, similar to the way the fifth was, but that was done before you saw it last Thursday. And then there was also some lots along sixty-seventh, I believe it is, that were added at the request of the developer because those improvements were done as part of, actually, that was part of Southdale Farms four. So I'm scared, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. And that was, so there's a lot, there was a large lot assessment put on, on that one. And it'll be re-subdivided when the land, when it comes around next time. So I don't think we have any comments. I recommend approval as presented.
Okay.
Or confirmation of the list as presented.
Do I have questions or comments from the council?
No, I don't.
I don't either.
I'm good.
Sarah?
Done, thank you.
Okay, without any comments or questions, I'll be looking for a motion for nine G water sewer storm street improvement district twenty-two-three-seven for Southdale Farms fifth addition?
Twenty-two-two-seven.
Twenty-two-two-seven, sorry.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion made. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Moving on to number ten. Number ten is the Boulevard Tree program. Bretton, you got this one?
Hey, this is coming back for discussion. We broke these out from when it was originally on agenda about two months ago. One is regarding Boulevard Tree refund policy and then the other one is regarding the replacement policy. With the refund policy, what we're really looking for is a formal policy from the city for both these. How we would handle a refund, our overall intentions were that if a tree was planted by the property owner or the builder of the lot, they do the deposit. But they plant a tree, they'll get their two hundred and fifty dollars back. Also, if a property owner was not able to have a tree planted in compliance with our ordinance, our land use ordinance, because we have spacing requirements for those Boulevard Trees, they'd be refunded back. We're asking them to formalize and do a policy so that way we could do a refund for those property owners accordingly. So that is in a nutshell what we're asking for within this. And like I said, to have a formal stance from the city, this is how we'll handle it. Any questions in regards to refund policy? I have it broken out separate so that way if there are any issues or concerns, we could do them. We could get through one or the other.
Okay.
Yeah, no, Bretton, Bretton and I went through this. I know you guys were holding on me on that. I was more concerned that we were refunding for trees that were neglected or, you know, not taken care of, obviously. And that is the expectation that once these trees are planted, that they're watered appropriately. We were able to fine tune the discussion and what is here now is acceptable with what I have discussed with Brett. It offers for, say that you've got a cul-de-sac and you can't plant a tree and we withhold money on a resident. Obviously, they would be entitled to that and we would replace a tree once if the tree itself didn't take it. Not for neglect, but if there was an issue with the type of tree and the soil, which we've experienced with the maples, have discussed previously. So I am now okay with this provided that on our council member screen.
So what Sarah brought up actually was getting into also the replacement side. So she did highlight quite a few of the points within the replacement side. On the replacement side, that replacement policy basically is if, if we plant a tree and somebody is participating through our Boulevard Tree program through the city that we do. And we plant a tree, it doesn't make it, we'll replace it one time. If it doesn't make it after that, it's up to the homeowner to either participate again with the Boulevard Tree program or plant one themselves or either one. But we'll do a replace it one time. The difference between us and entities like Fargo or Morehead, for example, once the tree is planted the one time, if it dies, they'll, the cities will come back and replace it. However, they actually have staff dedicated for a forestry department. We do not. So their forestry department will go and plant those trees as they notice that they're dead and replace them themselves versus here, we'll do one replacement after that. If it doesn't make it, they're, and within that time period, then it's up to the homeowner to get their place or to participate in the program again. So.
And I just have, it's maybe more of a comment than, than a question, but, I mean, I don't know if maybe a little more focus, would we ever want to consider a little more focus on, you know, it talks about homeowners who plant their own trees. I know it's taxing for our city staff to, to plant the trees. Should, should we try to present more of a focus of having the homeowners plant the trees? We can give them the planting specifications, the care specifications. That would take, take a large task somewhat. I mean, is that something we, we encourage? Or what is the status?
Well, if the homeowner wants a tree that's not offered that year with the Boulevard Tree program, because we only offer a couple of different types of trees each year. So if they want a particular tree that is allowed through the tree ordinance there, then that would be a tree that they would be encouraged to plant on their own and then seek the refund of the two hundred and fifty dollars. Like I said, we offer typically about three to four trees types a year. And we're trying to vary it up each year so we don't have the same trees over and over throughout the community to also diversify the trees within the community. Also, we've had some trouble with maples, so we're trying to tone down how much we offer for maples and encourage some of the other types of trees to be taken advantage of. So there is a means for homeowners. So, there is a means for homeowners to do that right now, through, if they plant themselves. It'd be, I think, hard to encourage or incentivize somebody to plant a tree themselves for the price point that we're doing it at.
But I mean, we could get the trees and then just have the homeowners plant them, I guess I'm just, I just, I realize it is taxing on city staff, and I think maybe we should encourage that more. It wouldn't be as much work then for.
And these trees would be, these trees that we get are bare root, so they are a lot more sensitive, so you can't just take that tree and then, oh, plant tomorrow, once you take it out of being watered, and, because we keep it like in a refrigerator trailer, we keep the trees watered, and keep them moist and everything, they dry out, it ruins, or jeopardizes the chance of them success, coming back successfully or growing. So that is a challenge that we have. I think that would also be separate from the overall policy.
Yeah, it was just kind of food for thought since the topic.
I would ask if the council does want us to look at some of those, we can, we could look at some of the other options, however, in, for the overall policies themselves that we're proposing, I just want to make sure we're able to get through those here.
Yeah, no, I recognize I'm a bit off topic on that, but I thought I'd bring it up, so.
Who, is it the public works staff that goes to make sure that the tree is planted if they did it on their own?
It's kind of a team effort between building inspection staff and public works staff, whoever's out. It, it's, I know Jennifer from our staff will, will check them, or she'll ask one of the building inspectors to verify, it just depends on who's available.
So how does that process work then? Like, they put, they give you the money when they do the building permit for the tree program? Then they call you up and say, I'm going to plant my own tree?
So.
And then, then what happens?
So if it, if it's a new home, so let's go, we break it out in two categories, we have houses built before 2023. Those, or 2023 and earlier, those trees are part of the Boulevard Tree Program administered by the city where you get a tree for, I think, like $75 for your first tree, or a side yard tree, if you're on an end lot, if you have two trees, the first one's $75, the second one's $250, if I remember correctly, if the dollar amount. As for, that's a participation where the resident reaches out to us, says, hey, I would like to get a Boulevard Tree, can I take advantage of this program? We have a form they fill out, and our staff works with them.
But what if they don't get a tree?
As for the new homes being built after 2023, so like if you have a new home right now, they have to have their tree planted within one year of the certificate occupancy issued, so if they got a new home built right now, their certificate occupancy was issued in October, we will check to see, okay, did they have a tree plant, did they have a tree planted in October? Or by October of the next year? Yep, Jennifer keeps track of them, uh, and actually, she messaged me here, so she does actually go and check the trees to see if they're planted or not, and she'll inspect the trees. Yeah, she's watching, so, I appreciate that she's. But anyways, she'll go check the tree, see if it was planted within that one year. If it was planted within that one year, then we'll coordinate with them, and, you know, with the approval of the refund policy, then we can refund them. If the tree is not planted, then we will plant the tree and we retain that $250 tree deposit that they have.
Okay.
So, sorry I got long-winded there on it, but it was two different scenarios, uh, and then, yeah.
Okay, well, I guess I don't see anything wrong with the refund policy, I don't know how you guys feel, Sarah, if you, you're good now with your questions?
And apologies really quick, Jennifer did point out, she says she has application that they, they're going to fill out. If they say, yep, I planted my tree, so she has a fill out, okay, yep, I planted it, I would like a refund, and then she goes and inspects the size of tree, and didn't meet the criteria there for it, so she'll verify the measurement of tree, request a check, it goes, gets approved, and then they can refund it.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
All right, any other questions?
Do, which neighboring, it looks like West Fargo does a Boulevard Tree Program, but they don't maybe do the trees themselves, but they do the deposit and refunds. Do any other cities actually plant the trees, any surrounding cities, and do they replace or refund if the tree dies?
So my understanding, Fargo and Morehead will plant that tree the first time, work with the resident, and then if the tree dies, they will go and replace the tree.
But Fargo, the residents buy the tree.
So Fargo, they buy the tree, so everybody has little different nuances tied to it, but if the tree dies, what they'll say is, our understanding is they'll replace. West Fargo has kind of been more, a little bit more in limbo is our understanding, but they've been looking to see where.
So I mean, really, we're trying to make it easier for them to like, get a tree, I guess, but.
We're trying to encourage the trees, keep it simple, uh, that, that would spend the priority of the tree program from day one was to encourage getting these trees in, and now we're and be more, a little more forceful of it with the tree deposit for a new home.
And I think it's, it's a very valuable program, I mean, I fully support Boulevard Trees, so I just, yeah, I was just throwing those comments out for discussion.
Yeah, I mean, it is taxing on the staff.
Yeah, that was my only angle on this, I know it's a heck of a lot of work for them, and if there was a way to alleviate and still accomplish it.
To, and I know I'm deviating from policies too a little bit, but for next year's budget, we have accounted for T seasonal positions, their main focus for the seasonal positions is to help out with the tree planting, and then help out with mowing throughout the summer, if we get those filled, and then we also have two temporary positions to account for next year's budget, so we can get temps, that their focus is tree planting, to help out too. So if we are able to have all those filled, temps are going to be a little easier than the part-time, but if we're able to get all four of those positions filled in time when we're doing the tree planting, between that and some of our public works staff, that will help alleviate some of those concerns too, to push them. Uh, so we're trying, that's what we have budgeted and planned out for next year to try, I know our staff being through this a few times now, they've been able to work out quite a few different quirks tied to us, and it's helped quite a bit, they've gotten a lot better at it. Uh, even down to process the gain of those trees planted, so they're pretty efficient, I watched them actually plant one lot here this year, and our staff can get them in actually pretty, pretty quick, so.
I don't have any concerns on the policy.
Yep, and it's very well received by the community.
Sarah, do you got any final questions?
Nope, I'm going to go on this one finally, thank you.
Okay, I will look for a motion then for the Boulevard Tree Program for both A and B.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the refund policy and the replacement policy for the Boulevard Tree Program.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second.
I'll second, I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, moving on, number 11, Jim, Public Works report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as we discussed two weeks ago, we were putting out for quotes to do some street patching around town. Um, I sent out information to Border States Paving, Northern Improvement, FM Asphalt, and, um, uh, Advanced Striking and Steel Co., they do some patching around the, around the metro area, and FM Asphalt thanked us for the quote, but they were busy for the year. Uh, Northern Improvement was busy for the year, Border States was busy, but they did provide a quote for 2025, and then the same with Advanced Striking, they were busy for the year. So, what I'm asking you tonight is that obviously we are, I don't think we should award a 2025 project, because the other ones didn't get an opportunity to quote for 2025, this was one contractor who said, well, we can try, but here's for 2025, and I'd like to give the other ones the opportunity for 2025 as well, since we may not be able to get it done, won't be able to get it done this year. But there are a couple spots where we would like to, to get done, and that's some tie-ins over in Lakeview Drive, aid in some plowing. There's some spots where that needs to be, and they did figure that does have a 2024 work on this quote, so I don't expect it to be more than a, maybe $10,000 or so, but I do think it's something that we needed to get done prior to winter, so. Public Works did say there's a spot on Park down by Willow, they'd like to get done, and then there's a spot on Nelson as well. I don't know what your thoughts were, if we could work with Border States to get those two areas plus the three or four areas of the ledges, and what I mean wedge is like three feet by a couple inches, you know, just so the snowball can guide over it, it's concrete pavement up against asphalt pavement.
You said Border States does have time then?
Through the wedges, they can.
Okay.
They can't do all the 75 yards of patching that we requested.
Okay.
So when they provide a quote, they had 2024 mobilization asphalt wedges, concrete tie-in, and then 2025 was mobilization asphalt patching, because they put on the bottom of their quote, it says, quote is valid, da-da-da, let's go with this one here. Yes, Border States say they can't guarantee any asphalt patching in 2024, but will complete in 2025, they provided some, some information on that, and then what it includes, but when the others reached out to Joel and myself, we didn't give them the option for 25, we just said we'd like to have it done in 24. So it says Border States took it upon themselves to submit something for 25, I'd like to give the other ones opportunity as well to do that, so. Um, as far, I'd like the blessing to do the patching along 63rd, the asphalt wedges, and then if you feel so kind to do Park and Nelson, those are the two that Adam thought this afternoon were the worst ones that he'd like to get done, so.
Okay, I do have one question for you on, uh, I'd have to look up the actual street number here.
Eighth Avenue.
Second, eighth, correct, eighth, there is a, it's like, the actual brand new asphalt is falling away.
So that spot started failing before the county did their project, Adam talked to the county, they backed the mill up a little further, dropped the mill down, went across the mill, and paved it, obviously the failure was below the surface, and it wasn't there, so they basically, it's shoving again, and that's the one that he commented on, coming up to, up to Conroe 17.
Okay, so that is part of the list?
That is, those are, so that one, the one at the entrance to Willow where it's all alligator crack, and then the areas for the wedges up along 63rd Street.
Fair enough, okay.
So, one thing I just wanted to add really quick, so when Jim was talking about wedge, he's talking like, if you have like a manhole, so you don't have the lip sticking out, so it's like a little ramp, so that way the paw blades don't catch it.
Okay.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yeah, just to go forward with those areas.
So you want a motion to, or to?
Well, I want a motion just to work with Border States Paving to get those areas that I described, the wedges, and then the one on Nelson and Park.
Okay, go ahead and wait for that motion.
I'll make a motion to move forward with, um, what would it be?
Asphalt patching on Park Drive near Willow Court, and then Eighth Avenue, uh, near Conroe 17, and then the 63rd Street asphalt wedges.
Should I say all that?
Just presented.
I was presented.
All right, I got a motion, I got a second.
I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion, a second, all those.
Hold on a second, I mean, are we okay with, you're, you're saying we don't need to go through a bidding process?
It's under $200,000.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're all okay with that.
And it is, it's significantly less.
He's, he's.
I was going to say $200,000.
And I did, I sent out, like I said, I sent out proposals to FM Asphalt, Northern Improvement.
Okay, I just want to, I just want to make sure I'm understanding, because I don't want anybody to come back to us and say that was a no-no.
Well, we, I reached out to them, I got responses back that one of them thanked us, so they couldn't do it, and the other ones Joel's been talking to too, so.
Okay, then I'm fine, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
So, I, I will just to tell you that Yubetcha, they were pushing dirt around, the tie-in, so the pavement is done on Yubetcha. Uh, 64th, most of the concrete pavement is done, the connection between Deer Creek and 64th will be done, they're planning on that Wednesday, the asphalt street between Fargo and, and 64th with the concrete, uh, the large pores are done on, on 64th, and then, um, there was a river's edge, they continue with a lot of just miscellaneous handpores here and there, Cup Creek's and Punch List Items, and then Deer Creek. Um, they've got, started with one crew today as far as underground, uh, south of Deer Creek Parkway, for Deer Creek second and third additions, with another crew coming in on, uh, hopefully midweek, and Southdale Farms 6, all the pavement and the sidewalks are in. They are now working on the boulevards and the streetlights, so I'll have a more detailed update in two weeks with our normal progressive estimates, all that, but I want to give you kind of a heads up as we get closer to the end of the season with that stuff, and the path is done too.
Yeah, it's nice.
Great.
I walked in on Friday, so it works.
Okay, any questions for Jim?
No.
Brett, you're up.
Uh, the only thing on my mind here for a council is, I can't recall if we brought, if we had this information last time, I think it was last week. Uh, our permanent bond, RAB 2024C, uh, the interest rate came in at, the NIC, or net interest cost, was 4.92%. Uh, our planer's resolution had it authorized at 6.2%, so it came in under, quite a bit under what we were expecting that it could go up to. So, we're very happy to see that, uh, in talking with colleagues last week, Mayor Chido, and Matt and I were on call with them, gained this information, gave them, okay, yes, they can move forward. We had, they mentioned that we had quite a few new buyers to the table also, which is good to hear, I mean, when you're dealing with bond and having that, you know, will it sell, you know, will you have the sale, and what the interest rates are, uh, that's good to hear, also, they had enough buyers where they're able to basically last minute push the interest rate to go down even more, and they're able to get down that point eight, or point 08% down, or eight basis points down even further because of that, so that was more of a last minute push since they had enough buyers, so that's good to hear, um, we're happy about that, so. Interesting thing about it, they had, I think they said almost 2 million from, of the bond was bought by local, like in state of North Dakota, local money, but it wasn't, he wasn't, they weren't referring to banks, it was like individuals, and that's a higher percentage, or a higher amount than what we've had before. So we're happy to see that too, so, yep, that's all I had.
Okay, all right, so, for my report, um, we will be having a meeting with the City of Lincoln, North Dakota here on Wednesday. They asked for our input on how we do some certain things, uh, they're growing very fast as well, um, as compared to both Horace and some other cities in the state of North Dakota, so they're going to travel here, um, we're going to have some informational meetings, um, I've asked for Jim and Brenton, Jace, uh, I think Sarah's going to be out now, um, and Matt, if Matt's going to be available, to join in on some of those meetings to discuss finances, planning, um, our special assessment policy, um, our comprehensive plan, I know they're going through their comprehensive plan right now as well, uh, so maybe we can learn from each other, uh, and other various topics, so, um, I'll be tied up with that the majority of the day, probably Wednesday, I'll stay with some of the other individuals here. Also, I have another, a couple other meetings coming up, um, one with the developer here next week, and, uh, I believe I have a meeting with Brenton at four o'clock on.
I mean, 12.
Tomorrow? Every day is a blur, so, uh, we will be busy the next couple of weeks here, um, going to various different meetings. Other than that, um, that is all I, I got, unless, anybody has any questions for me?
No, where's Lincoln located?
Lincoln is right beside Bismarck, so they, uh.
Right by the airport.
They, they are having all kinds of fun just kind of, they are, uh, Bismarck is a suburb of Lincoln, kind of like Fargo's a suburb of us, so. With that, uh, Sarah, you're on the phone, so, uh, I'll hand it over to you.
I don't have a whole lot this week, I, uh, got, got pretty busy taking a call with work here, but I can honestly say I did get out to the project. Uh, I spent some time this weekend driving around and walking around with my dog, and so far, everything I saw was good, I was pleased with the progress on the path. Uh, I was curious where we were at on 64th, Jim, what was really left there?
Uh, behind the curbs, behind the curbs is street lighting, that's the, that's the big stuff, and that one has a completion date for the plantings and all that stuff next year, but getting the road open is, um, is the priority right now, there's some tie-in, it's coming off of the 64th Avenue Roundabout, there was some drainage issues in there that'll, we'll talk more about in two weeks when I have some more information, but, um, that's, that's where that's at.
Do we have a timeline on the streetlights up there?
Um, no, not yet, it was discussed at our staff meeting today, but I don't remember the date, um, for that.
That was, that was the only questions I had, I was aware that the plantings weren't. I was aware that the plantings weren't due until next spring, but getting that road open is priority before winter, so that's, that's where that question stands from.
Yep.
That's really all, that's really all that I have this week. And then Jim, I accepted your meeting on Friday, thank you.
Yep, I sent it.
Okay, Naomi, what do you got?
Uh, met with Jace today, we went over a few things. Talked a lot about the workshops that we're going to be having, so I'm excited to see what the staff bring forward with those. Let's see.
What workshop?
All of the workshops.
Oh, just all of them, okay, I didn't know.
Yep, we didn't dive into them today, they're working on them, so. And then, let's see, Thursday I have a meeting.
Okay, we have study review committee.
We have a study review committee meeting on Thursday and Friday. And then next week I have a meeting that I plan on going to with Jace. Uh, what's the development, what, what's the developer name?
Uh, with Optimum Development.
Optimum Development to kind of look at some of their stuff, so. Yeah, otherwise that's, I think that's pretty much my world lately.
Okay, Stephanie?
Um, I have nothing.
Okay, Rachel?
Um, I don't have anything from Parks this week, but I, the Halloween event is coming soon, it's on Saturday. We're meeting tomorrow as a team, so I don't know if Paul gives you anything. Yeah, it's going to be fun.
Do you want to start again?
Uh, six o'clock.
At the?
Heritage Business School.
Heritage, okay.
Um, were we going to do a booth?
Uh, there'll be several, city, of course.
Okay. Were we doing the one for the?
Any here?
Yep.
Yeah, we're still working on that.
Okay, let me know if you need my help. I can sit for a couple hours if I need to.
Okay.
If we don't, if we don't have another volunteer, that is. And I'd love to see some community.
Yeah, we've got some really awesome communities.
People, so.
Do you need help setting anything up?
Um, we do have a good list, we can always use one of yours.
Okay, and who do they contact?
Oh, just contact Paul at CityHorus.com.
Paul at CityHorus.com. Okay, Rachel, anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, I will look for a motion then for the Boulevard Tree Program for both A and B.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the refund policy and the replacement policy for the Boulevard Tree Program.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second.